Okay, so here we are.
We'll get it right this time.
So now we will welcome to town board web session of uh Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. And we're gonna start up with the continuation of our public hearing. It's a continuation from October twenty second regarding double poll legislation. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
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 Okay, any public comments for this double poll legislation? What?
Okay.
So I have a question from Jill. Did you ever get the database?
Nope.
Could you please send them another bef- you know, be- between now before December sixteenth?
Yep.
And same with Chief, did you get any feedback on the ones that you said were not?
He actually did.
Yeah, they're working on the one on Memorial Drive and one seventeen. They're planning on doing it starting Monday.
And were you correcting your 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 review and that they didn't have the ones you believe they didn't have?
They did not have them and uh just just the next morning um I was riding into work and I just happened to look between Millwood Road and South Greeley. And I was driving, so I don't want to be too distracted, so I was counting real quick.
I did the same thing.
I had at least nineteen double polls.
Exactly. I have no idea.
And they showed and they showed. And they showed two on and they showed two on uh Quaker. So I asked them, I said, you know, see, can you look at it to this? And they and they did say they looked at it and they all blamed Cable Vision. But I was like, but the question is, they still aren't on engines, so.
Right, exactly. There's a difference.
Right, right.
Two are adding into the database, so.
And then also by them blaming someone else, that goes to our point before, how are they gonna make each other do it right and do it well?
Not. That's why you're gonna have to find everybody.
I think the problem is that they think that once, like what we were told once is that once they remove, Con Ed removes their wires, then it becomes responsibility of the utilities to take it down, so they probably take it out of the inventory then.
I mean, the remedy is really.
They're like.
But that's why you have to, we're gonna have to find.
I I understand.
So we have a person who's the mom of the way. I did the same thing.
I I have no, it's joint several liability.
Like, I was dark and I counted thirteen. I said there's no way there's only fifty.
I am new to that.
They all go.
No, that was similar.
Why couldn't it work? I said Nick.
That was, that was a two and a half mile section of town.
Nick, these are just real quickly, joint and several, is there any reason why joint and several liability wouldn't work? Are we talking about from a practical or legal perspective?
Well, we're about from a practical perspective. Legal perspective, it probably can.
It works. But why wouldn't, why do you think it would not?
But from a practical perspective, I think as it kind of was clear today that the utilities don't have control over each other.
Right.
So Con Ed takes down their lines and let's say Altice doesn't have their stuff down. Con Ed has no control over Altice doing that. If we're finding, and so joint and several are gonna say, okay, well then, Con Ed's gonna say, I'm not paying and somebody, you're better off just finding the actual people directly who are on the poles, which gets them to move their ass to get it done.
I disagree because of because of the fear that there is several liability as opposed to, you know, partly joint liability, I apologize. Um is it incentivizing, it behooves Con Edison saying, hey, you last guy on, you gotta get this darn thing off or else. And now, you know, I'm not, I'm not taking ownership of this because you're not doing it and makes them, sort of forces them to communicate if nothing else.
I think the pole owner money is gonna force them and if we actually find the people who are on the poles,
Right, but if I get off.
they'd be more, Con Ed will be like, let me get my stuff down, cause I don't wanna be fined. If they know nobody else is getting it off the poles, act- that actually gets rid of a bit of incentive to say, well, we're gonna get fined anyway. No, because we can find them every, each and every month, but the fact of the matter is Con Ed and Ver- day. So Con Ed and Verizon own the poles. I didn't see anybody else on the list, mind you, the shortest.
Each other day. Each other every day.
But it's the wires of other people. I understand, but the pole owner needs to be able to put in their contract that they put in with Verizon, with Altice,
Wires, yes. Yep.
the fact that if they were notified of a double pole situation, you'd put it out. If we don't put financial teeth behind that.
No.
No, we don't. That's, we're no disagreeing.
No, I'm saying we need to be able to find individually and both.
Right, and then Con Ed ha- or utility pole has attachment agreements with those providers and they should use those agreements to enforce them to remove their utility structure sooner.
And it kind of seems a bit heavy.
And look to, and then from what I could tell, so basically, if you take a look at the list that they updated for us with all the new dates, they're all done the day before or three days before. They haven't given this one nanosecond of thought. Yeah, ridiculous.
Yeah, it was like thirty something, thirty one, I think they count counted out of fifty.
I mean, it was nice they all showed up, but the fact of the matter is, you know, they put some low level person on it and had them pull a couple reports.
Well, I I. I think the balance and the concern is, it's a carrot and a stick and I wanna see the legislation passed, but at the same time, I think we have to recognize one of the incentives, even if they haven't done a good job to date, is to to let them know that it's lingering, if that's the right way to describe it.
Lingering, it's festering.
No, 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 no. You're missing, this is what I'm referring to. I'm talking about legislation because it, you know, we want, you know, we have a lot of different things, we have a lot of different things that was going on in Con Edison and whether, as I said before, they're not tied to it, we have an issue of a contract dispute. We have, who knows what later on, what sidewalks are being fixed and moved around. Um, you know, we wanna have.
Winter is coming.
Winter is coming. Uh and I I think that that certainly this one will be telling too. Hopefully, we don't have another catastrophe in terms of a bad weather event that we've had in in seasons past. But, you know, let's see how responsive they are. Um, nothing has anything to do with the other, other than Nick credibility of them saying they really wanna be good neighbors. But if they don't wanna be good neighbors to us, by all means, we don't have to be good neighbors to them. And and when we pass the legislation, if we do, and the county looks at it, and municipalities look at it, and maybe someone in the state looks at it, um, you know, they can dig their own proverbial grave if they don't wanna.
I even think to a certain extent, if we pass the bill and we actually put an in effect date, you know, this bill goes in effect, so if we wanna say by June thirtieth of twenty twenty, the double poles will be taken care of and then at that point, we'll start it. So they know they've got nine months to clean that up. And I think that will work. It's not that we're being bad, or it's not like we're being unreasonable, but it's clear to me that if they haven't been able to address it in three years, they're never gonna address it. Unless we put some people in.
Yeah, we're probably gonna address it, that's right. But we also need an answer to.
That's act- that's a good idea.
We also need an answer that I think both Lisa and Ed, I think, wrote it last time in different ways and and is how we're gonna fix it going forward because it's, even if they get rid of the double double poles, doesn't mean others won't be born.
Right.
And birthed along the way. So we have to, we have to, we can't keep chasing them down.
Right.
Well, my question to you is this. I I, well, the other question I have, because obviously they haven't been able to deliver the database, even though they said they had it handy.
I I have to tell you that I don't know if they even allow it.
Well, no, but they have a master database and what I can do is take those two and match them up.
Oh, one.
Yeah, you were still getting so matrixed out over the last time.
I mean, you were, I I don't know that that's gonna, honestly, I don't know that that's gonna help because. But what if. No, but we don't have a place that we have a shared set of poles that we consider within the town of Newcastle. So we had the one that the intern created, wrote down all the pole numbers.
Oh, you you mean, right, a list of double poles, drive, drive.
Whoa, no, a list of any poles with the comment of what's.
But someone still has to come in through and make sure they're there, cause they think they've done.
Con Ed has it.
No, they don't have it.
They don't, clearly they don't.
And they're totally wrong.
No, 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 but what we can do is we.
The vast majority of poles are owned by Verizon, not Con Ed.
No, I understand, but there is a master list of all poles, just as Con, as as Con Ed said, that's in this like system of all the poles within the town of Newcastle, regardless of who owns them. And we don't have that master list.
Jason is shaking his head.
Please.
Yeah, Jason might, well, I'll know it. So I spoke at length with uh with a gentleman last, late last week about the, about the engine system. So
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Their system does not have all poles that are, they only have their own poles.
But they have the database.
Not of, they don't have Verizon's. They do not say they didn't have Verizon's.
I don't think they do. I I know.
So that engine system is solely a ticketing system about issues with the poles.
It's a voluntary ticketing system.
That's right. And so part of the problem is there's no coordination. It's not like a work manag- a true work management system where they can say,
Right.
Con Edison is going to say, two weeks from now, we are going to touch five poles. So the day after we touch these five poles, the next,
Yeah, right.
you know, the next company should come through and, you know, right behind them and the next company right behind them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
It it true, so I think Jeremy's point was spot on in that if other municipalities were to, you know, take this on, then it could be that the um, you know, this consortium of of utilities get together and upgrade their software to be able to actually.
It's not, it's actually not their software, it's the Public Service Commission's and that's actually the problem.
But but. But let me go back. I specifically asked about this and it's not the engine system. The engine system is their internal ticketing system.
I think we should.
No.
No, that's, I think they have internal system.
But they have.
Right.
In addition to engines.
In addition to engines, absolutely.
They may be.
They must have a voluntary tracking system.
So what they were supposed to do is give me a list of the poles from the internal system, right?
You know what, you know what the unintended consequences of this thing to be?
No, that's both all poles where Con Ed has their wires on. They have that, but in independent system, not the engine system.
Wires on.
And they have that and they should be able to deliver that. And we should take a look.
I'm not seeing what the consequence is.
The only thing consequence is if we, if they have to bear costs associated.
Oh, gets passed under the rate period.
It's gonna be passed under the consumer.
With the PSC's approval.
Yes.
And yeah, that's, that'll build a joint ticketing system.
Right.
If you take a middle to you guys.
Wait minute.
No, no, I'm talking about just generally, I'm talking about the fine.
Have you taken a look at your Con Ed bill recently?
I don't know if the PSC would pass fines on them.
Have you taken a look at your Con Ed bill recently?
I don't know if PSC would allow fines and pass on the rate period.
So I have on, let me put it to you this way. I have my house and then I have the tenants pay their bill and then I have the garage, right? And the garage is basically running the lights that turn on when the tenants go in so they can get up the stairs and turn on, the rare occasions to go down to the lower garage. If you have for argument's sake, you know, a hundred dollar bill a month, of that bill, approximately thirty bucks is infrastructure and maintenance that goes, not your kilowatt charge, not your this thing. They're collecting the money already, they're just not spending it.
Alright, so what what's our next step here in terms of?
So Nick just had a had a a comment to him and I think he's, he's right.
Kiffing?
Public Service Commission. And all things end with them. And I think we should invite them to come to them down. I think our state representatives should be here because this engine system that they put into place has no teeth. There is no uh reporting requirement. If they fail to report, they have no consequences if they aren't out within a certain amount of time, they're not timely. There's no consequences. The voluntary compliance doesn't.
Right, the municipalities should be able to enter poles into the engine system. You're missing a partner. That engine system should be a partnership.
Engine system, which we can.
So we're suggesting we.
That's a good point.
And our Senator, some of our county executive and county legislature and say, let's say.
Yes. Come on down, we're we're having a problem. This is the problem.
I just think they're training manual. I bet they have training manual. Look at that.
So when when should we try to arrange for that? I mean, how much notice do we need to give these folks to really get a turnaround? I know we should, obviously we gotta think they're available.
Our last twenty twenty.
So.
I'll call Susan.
But also.
Do you adjourn the hearing for ninety days? Maybe that gives you enough time to meet with the PSC and the state representative.
Yeah.
Why don't we maybe do it a little shorter and then just kick it? Like sixty days and kick it?
Yeah.
Sure, we could do that. So.
I think the more time we give them, the more lax they get in things that we do.
It's a valid point.
We gotta hold our calendars.
Yeah, I, only because I don't know.
January twenty first.
I used to.
Oh, you're not, can I come? Will you come?
No, I won't.
You come for public comment?
I used to, that was my first time.
I guarantee you. I can't, I don't know where I'll be, but I know where I'm gonna be.
You'll be here, yes.
January twenty first.
So I think it's a motion to adjourn the public hearing to January twenty first with the intent that in the interim, staff will be reaching out to the state representatives and the public service commission to arrange for a meeting so that we can have uh explain to them the hardships and the frustration we're experiencing and to encourage changes to the engine system and all, and also whatever other systems they could provide.
The state, the state representative, the PSC or just state representatives and the PSC?
I think both, yeah, both.
And I think county, I think I think our kind of.
Yeah, and George Vladimir.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Right, kind of.
So moved.
Pete Harkman is here, yeah.
Captain.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, tonight.
You got out of here.
Oh, he's, he's coming back in like eleven hours, is that, is this not a big deal?
You escaped?
Yes.
Sure, shortly.
Alright, go ahead, Mr. Sooda.
They're right, well, Jill uses these as a work session.
I just forgot, I'm new, I apologize. My fault.
It's okay.
Trying to relax, journeys. But acceptance of the maintenance bond?
Yes, it's for uh for the second half of the one twenty sidewalk improvement project. Um now that the work has has actually long been done. Uh cash bond agreement for Nikic for twelve Cynthia Court. Uh next is a request for a resolution. Uh this is for the frac gas power.
Yeah, that guy that came in.
Mm-hmm.
Kept them, kept them.
So we have a, we have a draft in here?
Um, there's a draft from the packet. It's not included with the resolutions though, but it was the one that that the um gentleman handed out. It's in there.
Somebody just referenced a resolution in the packet when we adopted it.
Yes.
Just referenced it.
Yeah. Was it treated?
The board's seeing the resolution, you. Right, it's, it's been this last week.
I'm, it's, yeah.
Yep.
Right, so the only thing is, is that we should just substitute our assemblymen, David Buckwald.
Right, and then authorize the administration to make any corrections as to the form to make inconsistent with uh Newcastle.
Newcastle.
Oh, that's actually, yeah, that's the number that's got a little.
Yeah, the peak skilled it, right. So.
Okay, so you get a a resolution to adopt and authorizing the administration to conform it to reflect Newcastle's uh comments on the resolution.
Where is the resolution?
Page forty four.
Forty four and forty five.
Second.
Oh, favor. I'm excited to do it, I'm sorry. Hi.
Hi.
That was efficient.
Um, question about the ELQ change order. Um.
Yes.
Which might, the change of the the steps?
Forty six, yeah.
Concrete steps?
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, and please refresh my recollection of what we discussed. Did did they already say twenty nine, so they said twenty nine thousand at the same time, they
Yes.
they agreed to subcontract it out for twenty nine grand or they said, ooh, we need some extra money because we we wanna not do it?
No. So um, so when we originally started talking about um acceleration payments with with ELQ that we when we originally started talking about the fact that ELQ needed to be done, um they got a little testy with us and they said that there was a lot of e- extra work outside of the contract that they were having trouble getting done within the contract terms. So one of the major things was the steps in front of whispering points in Boswell's field office. So we actually went out to bid.
Right.
Palindino, who did the second half of the one twenty sidewalk, uh was the lowest responsible bidder. We contracted with them to do the steps. At the end of the day, it was problematic. ELQ kept pushing the date, pushing the date. Palindino had other contracts that they had to do. Um and ELQ finally said, you know what, we'll just do it for the same twenty nine thousand dollars and so that ELQ ended up doing it. They just took the.
The same ELQ that wanted to subcontract out con- concrete because other people were better than them.
Yes.
Right, wasn't that their sort of philosophy?
Yes, for the flat work. So yes, they did the steps. ELQ did all of our steps. So evidently, they're very good with steps. It's the frac, evidently, they have some issues with, sort of, sort of.
Alright.
So this is the, so the board already approved the twenty nine thousand dollars to Palindino, that, yes. It's just that the problem is ELQ did the work now Palindino.
It's transferring the property to.
Yes.
So we need a change order to reflect that ELQ is paying at Palindino's.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, um, the, okay. The other change orders, uh, if you turn to page fifty and fifty one, uh for the most part, these are all change orders that the board has seen and actually Rob Deary had incorporated every single one of these into the budget. It's just that we didn't actually approve the change order. So when the last um uh requisition came up, Diana saw that there were line items that we were beyond the contract price and although the board knew about it, we didn't actually have change orders. So I apologize for the sticker shock value of this total, but these are numbers that the board has seen already. And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of them.
Excuse me.
Alright. So like things like, you know, thirty six C, the concrete. As it turns out, well, actually, um B, oh, yeah, C for the concrete. Um, we approved the additional sidewalks going down to Bischoff. We approved the granite overrun. We didn't approve the concrete overrun. So this is the concrete overrun. Uh change order thirty six B, John Caswick believes that because of the um um substantial excavation on Lower King, unless we did full depth reclamation down there, that the um, that the pavement was ultimately going to wave because the foundation was, as he described it, Swiss cheese. So he suggested that we do the full depth reclamation so that once we did it, it would last the twenty some odd years and we wouldn't have to pop the emergency again. Okay. And et cetera, et cetera. Some additional granite curving and drainage relocation. Alright, okay. Uh DPW calendar. So this is the calendar for Santa Pro for next year.
Yep.
Um Lexi Kelly does a phenomenal job every year, but he really does appreciate um another set of eyes looking at it. So if you get a chance to look at it, I could try to make it bigger for you. Um, or it's, look at it on the computer. Um, you know, I sort of went over the dates, looked it up, right to me, but uh, you know.
Do you?
If you get a chance to take a look at it, he'd very much appreciate it. Um, these go out uh right at the end of the year, so they have to go out shortly.
See, there's that number. Eight oh nine one. Um, three oh nine one. That's why I always get those calls.
We're so sorry. We are so, so sorry.
Always moving to my.
Made you feel official.
There you go.
Moving to my bed, I'm used to my Tuesday. I don't like this.
Recycling.
You got moved? What?
No.
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm looking in the wrong place. Disregard, disregard.
That would be a first pressure.
No, they, yeah.
Yeah.
There would be a lot of explaining to do there. We have a request to use town property to place innovative memory at the community center that we do annually. Um, we have an opportunity for um to apply for a New York City DEC grant for Sunny Ridge Preserve. Um Sabrina's requesting a uh a resolution in support of that.
It's a bat pass.
They're, they're very beneficial.
Well, it's very bad. That is very interesting.
Isn't it?
So what I'm trying to understand on this bat removal thing, I mean, the bat inventory thing.
It's on your radar?
You encourage him, okay? I just want you to know.
It seems that page seventy, um, I just wasn't sure, under the rationale, it sort of feels like it jumped in the middle of something. It like was a non sequitur. Something tree replacement diameter requirements following the removal contained with the existing town co evaluation. Tree replacement could also potentially require replacement and or enhancement if you. I just didn't understand what that said and like, I was, I thought maybe something was cut off.
Where are you looking?
Page seventy, the top explanation.
Tree replacement, okay.
Hmm, maybe I missed something?
Start something sixty nine.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
It does.
Yeah.
No, target informing the local real estate contractor development prospect or, in addition to meeting this quantitative based.
The, the, the path of that seller on the previous page.
Oh, got it. Okay, got it. Thanks.
I thought you had a question on whether Indiana, Indiana back and, I, was it northern or longer back? It wasn't short.
I know they're.
No, actually, no.
It's a good question.
Yeah, it was ready fixed.
Okay, next.
I, I am a big bat fan, so, and they're very important.
I like Batman myself.
Yeah. Who's waiting for that?
It's been all night.
Okay, next one?
Okay, um extension of more time.
Yep.
So it's still good.
Yeah.
So um, is it, do we have a, we have a resolution in the packet?
To refer to the planning board in the county and to schedule a public hearing for December third.
Here, December ten.
Though I appreciate the enthusiasm.
We're active, have we been actively engaging in.
This is December ten, December ten.
It's a December ten.
Form-based code.
Actively.
Yes.
It's a doubt.
And last is uh the addition of four additional clean pass spots at the train station?
Yes.
I'm just curious and and Rob will have to address this because uh he won't be there, but at some point, you know, I mean, it's, this is a very successful program. And at some point, what would you say, do we?
Some point we're running out of spots for everybody else.
Right. Yeah, it, it, you know, it's become an issue. And then I think to someone's point and maybe it was Steve that was rushing to put words in his mouth, is you were encouraging people to get environmental cars, friendly cars, and parking at a train station and the S U V is driving around town. But
I shouldn't be driving around there.
Right. Exactly.
That, that's a conversation for another night after January first.
So, it's, S U V is currently working on a proposal for the town board for a longer term solution that will incentivize, you know, electric vehicles as opposed to hybrids and will make some more substantive changes. This is to deal with the immediate issue which we're getting emailed about by residents weekly.
Yes, very much so. Correct.
Yeah.
So this will be a, you know, stopgap measure until the S U V comes forward with their.
So what their goal is.
And again, it's only until nine, right?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Okay.
There's no, only Fridays you get a spot until nine thirty. But the S U V is looking to uh phase out, which I agree with a hundred percent. I think I've been there too, phase out the hybrid spots in favor of electric spots. I mean, the goal is to be on the cutting edge
And making of electric. Right.
and and encourage people to drive these cars. And the fact is hybrids now are becoming, you know, pretty, it's not, it's not as uh cutting edge anymore as, as it was.
Right.
And this is gonna bring this right back to the town board because we s- we take away those hybrid spots.
Well, we're talking about grandfather.
So what I'd like to do is to grandfather people in who have already purchased hybrids for a certain period of time, so that.
Then when you renew it.
Yeah. It's not actually, in my view, environmentally friendly to go purchase something new. Um, if you have a, you know, so if you've purchased a hybrid within the past two years, it's not actually beneficial to go out and purchase a new electric vehicle.
A lot of people lease them and that lease is gonna be up.
I'm sure there's a deep analysis.
And if they, if they want to um get a new sticker for their new car, it's gonna have to be uh an electric vehicle when they go to get the new sticker.
Right, right. So you grandfather the hybrids in and then the new stickers.
Oh, look, we can cross that, we can cross that.
I will talk about it when it comes. I have a problem expanding this too much, cause I really feel like there are a lot of people who either can't afford those types of cars, can't afford to install the electricity in their garages. It's gonna have, be needed to run an electric car, need them because they need to drive long distance, more longer distances, whatever it may be. I think at some point, we're phasing out all the regular spots and it's gonna become a problem as well.
But, but I might have to look at it more holistically.
And that's what the, that's what they're doing. Yeah.
Yeah, right, right, right. And bicycle park, I could probably, the problem's coming back up King Street.
The guy does electric bikes.
Alright.
One guy takes a scooter every day. Gets off at one twenty fifth.
I see. He takes it down to the city?
Yeah.
Oh, on the.
And he gets off one twenty fifth.
Oh, oh, he's got a little bike that you break out.
It's a scooter, it's an electric scooter.
I think maybe he takes a scooter on the company track on the hodge.
There's a guy. There's a guy takes a folding bike.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, the Brockton, yeah.
Alright, what's the next uh? Alright, so that's it.
Getting ready to now around.
Resolutions, yes. I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars and seventy eight cents listed in the summary pre-check writing report and detail voucher voucher, detailed voucher detail report. Each prepared on November nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Checks will be issued mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
We must drop that order.
I move to adopt the following minutes, January first, twenty eighteen work session, January first, twenty eighteen organizational minutes, January ninth, twenty eighteen town coordinating, January twentieth, sixteen, twenty eighteen.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to set a public hearing with regards to a six month extension of moratorium imposed by local law thirteen of twenty eighteen with respect to review and approval of certain land use variance, building permit and sign permit applications of certain properties within the B dash R and B dash RP districts in the chapter by handle in the town of Newcastle. Said public hearing to be held on December tenth, twenty nineteen at seven thirty PM and direct that the proposed local law be referred to Newcastle Planning Board and the Westchester County Planning Board for comment.
Second.
Well, favor.
Alright.
Uh, I move to authorize the hiring of Manuel Wellcunno to the position of labor within the Recreation and Parks Department at an annual salary forty seven thousand two hundred and eighty one dollars and forty three cents effective December sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the hiring of Adriana Case to the position of senior office assistant within the Department of Public Works at an annual salary of sixty nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars effective December ninth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the reappointment of Michael Nolan to the zoning board of appeals for a five year term effective January first, twenty twenty through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Well, favor.
Alright.
Hi.
I move to approve change order number thirty five in the amount of twenty nine thousand dollars for ADA improvements at seventy nine South Greeley Avenue.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I move to approve ELQ change orders thirty six A, B, C, D, and E in the, as uh more enumerated in the attached resolution.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi, relax, relax.
I'm always the second skill.
You still have the top, go ahead.
What?
You have the top, you have the best.
Oh. Uh, you just don't wanna do this one, do you?
I move to adopt the following resolution authorizing acceptance of a maintenance bond for King Street sidewalk improvement. Uh whereas Palinero Concrete Creation Corporation is engaged by town of Newcastle uh in connection with this project. Uh whereas phase two of the King Street sidewalk improvement project is complete, uh and Palinero submitted a proposed maintenance bond um as a number reflected there in the amount of three hundred fifty one thousand one hundred thirty six dollars ninety five cents uh which guarantees the King Street sidewalk improvement phase two against defective materials and workmanship. Uh whereas the town attorney and town engineer reviewed the same uh and find that the maintenance bond amount is acceptable in form and amount. Therefore, not be resolved. The town board of town of Newcastle will authorize acceptance of aforementioned spot.
Second.
Well, favor.
Uh huh.
Hi.
Uh I move to adopt the following resolution authorizing acceptance of a cash bond, uh whereas Goran John Nikic, uh owner of the property located at twelve Cynthia Court, Mark Isco, has shown the great municipality in the town of Newcastle tax map as reflected to apply for and obtain certain approvals for the property uh from our planning board as set forth in that resolution dated November eighth of two thousand seventeen and filed with the clerk court thereafter. Whereas pursuant to the requirements of the resolution, going to wish to post a sum of money with the town to ensure that all medieval plantings are guaranteed and replaced as necessary uh to be compliant with the resolution. Whereas the owner has submitted this cash bond agreement in the amount of five thousand six hundred dollars uh which covers all that work. Whereas the town attorney and our engineer reviewed, find it acceptable and now therefore be resolved that town board of the town of Newcastle here will authorize the acceptance of the aforementioned cash bond agreement. Be it further resolved that the town board of the town of Newcastle here will authorize supervisor as duly authorized, doesn't need to sign the cash bond agreement along with all. to sign the cash bond agreement along with all other documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
Second.
I'm sorry, can you read it again? Oh, good stuff, Batman. Aye.
Well, in favor?
All right.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I, I made a motion, somebody.
You seconded it.
Yeah, she did, I got it. Okay, I move to allow the Shabada, uh.
Come on, come on.
Shabada of Chappaqua. Display a minor in front of Newcastle Community Center from December eighteenth, January sixth, twenty twenty.
So you pointed that out.
Well, in favor?
Second, aye.
Well, I.
Um, this is for a New York City DEC grant for Sunny, Sunny Ridge Preserve, uh, that's a, it's an application for a project grant under the earlier community forestry program. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board of Newcastle hereby does approve and endorse the application of the development department for a grant which is to, which is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars under the round fifteen urban and community forestry program for a project known as the Sunny Ridge Preserve seasonal bat inventory for the Newcastle Park Forest Management Plan, which is located within the town of Newcastle.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I move to approve reassigning train station parking spots to create four additional clean pass spots at the town of Chappaqua Station.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize waiving the tax penalty for fifty eight Pine Cliff Road in the amount of one hundred and ninety one dollars and fifty eight cents.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye. Move to adjourn?
Ooh, 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 is there anything else? Any others?
The, uh, did, what about that Dan and Scammer?
Yeah.
She did that, she did that.
Yeah, you seconded.
All right, I still think we're good.
All right, I second the, uh, move to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Well, in favor?
All right, aye.
Thanks.